We can do the agenda, then we have a presentation on the JAB. What's the JAB stand for?
Justice Assistance Grant.
This is the presentation we do every year that we automatically get, and they need to do a presentation, and so we need to here expecting Lieutenant Jones also. And then, once we finish whatever other caucus business, there's a planning committee meeting at six to consider the community aggregation resolution. So, we'll get into the agenda for Thursday. Remember, the meeting next week is on Thursday, September 5th because of Labor Day. That's quickly snuck up on us. On the local laws, Local Law D by Mr. Flynn. I'm not sure what it means. This just amends a section of the city code which references the Commissioner of Public Works and changes it to Commissioner of General Services.
Just do it.
What?
Just do it.
So, because it's a local law, we can't pass it on the same day unless we get an emergency message from the mayor. So, I'm not going to refer to committee. It will be introduced. I'll tell you, there are references like this all over, and there's some language in the code that says wherever you see public works, it means general services. So, I don't know what's for this particular one, but whatever.
Kind of like Mike Potter's presentation.
Yeah. The other local laws, I don't have any action on those. I believe there is a finance committee meeting potentially in the works to take care of Local Law C of 2019, which deals with installment payments. So, that's something happening there. On the ordinances held, I don't have anything at this point. I'm just going to touch on Item 4 by Mr. Flynn, the towing fees, because that was discussed. We did bring it up in the leadership meeting yesterday morning to get a more definitive response from the mayor on where the administration stands. The mayor was quite clear that she does not support an increase in the towing fees, and if we do pass it, she will veto it. They feel that there are no problems right now as far as contracts, that they're on a cycle, that they actually have vendors who want to get on the list. So, they don't feel there's a problem with it right now, or there's happened any issues or anything where there's been, you know, cancellations due to a lack of towing facilities.
Follow the money.
Huh? Well, that, yeah. I will say that two talkings, I happened to see him later that day, mentioned whatever. He, even though the mayor seemed to indicate that, the police department was opposed to it, he indicated that he didn't really have any position on it, was neutral. So, the chief. But, so, I don't know. I think they're...
Why are you neutral?
Who knows?
Give me a reason to raise your hand.
So, right now, I don't know if you want to go, whatever you want to do, but that's, you know, you ask...
He said, he said the police department was the one who took the hurt.
So, you can talk, Jack's not here, you can, you know, let him know, but, you know, I was asked to bring that up in the leadership, that's a response I got. The remaining ordinances, I do not have any action on for to, for Monday, for Thursday, I will just note, on two of these, I know we have a public hearing for the zoning ordinance number eight, 1681-19, on, I believe, September 16. And the planning board also acted last night on the rezone by Mr. Johnson, 1371-19, with a recommendation. And so, we are, that requires a public hearing also, so we are able to get that on for a public hearing also on the 16th.
Okay.
So, we'll do both of those. And then, Kathy, I don't know if you want to add that to, if it's possible to add it to the September 12th agenda, if you want, and that way, if everything goes right, that can be. The public hearing, it's going to be at our meeting on September 16th. So, we'll have two public hearings that night. On resolutions introduced, the first one by Mr. Renani relates to pending legislation that would authorize the legal use of electric assisted bikes. The legislation has passed both houses and is awaiting action by the governor, and this resolution would indicate the council's support for that. I did send out a copy of the legislation, or Michelle forwarded a copy earlier, and also a letter from NICOM, Conference of Mayors, in support of it. So, if there's no objection, I'm okay moving for passage of the resolution on Monday night since everyone's on board with it.
Okay.
Okay? And I don't know if everyone wants to be cosponsors or whatever.
No.
Okay. All right.
It's complicated.
Sure.
You're right. You're right.
And it's very difficult for hard enough for most people to...
Well, maybe we want to put it in committee and discuss it further.
Oh, gosh, please, no.
All right. The next resolution, Item 63, that's a, that's a, that's a resolution to the council rules. And, you know, right now, when we have legislation that's introduced, and we assign, especially legislation that might come from the mayor or an executive branch agency, is usually assigned to the committee chair who acts as sponsor. There are times when the committee chair would not want to sponsor some of that stuff. And so, this would allow for, you know, would allow the president pro temp to assign sponsorship to the committee, and the committee chair would act as the manager. So, in other words, budget ordinance could be introduced by the Committee on Finance at the request of the mayor, so, you know. It's the way, actually, the county does this with a lot of their stuff in the state legislature, where you don't necessarily put a name on it because it's not something you want. So, I will, it will be referred to the operations committee. I'm going to try to get an operations meeting on this soon so we can have it in place before we get some of that nasty budget stuff that they're going to submit to us, okay?
Yep.
So, it'll say, instead of the first, instead of the committee?
Instead of saying like...
Yeah.
Okay.
But now, if it was, maybe we should put it there just, if it's enough to, to, by the, introducing at the request of the mayor, we can also do that.
Yeah, it can say, you know, introduced on the, by the Committee on Finance at the request of the mayor, or at the request of the Law Department or whatever, depending on what it is. Yes.
What if the mayor's, like, on administration, is adamant about giving it to a specific council member?
But we don't care, yeah, that's not an issue. They don't control it.
No, what I'm saying is that...
Well, he has a special relationship with all, you know, with all the...
What I'm saying is that, for example, the administration want to pass a certain expressives.
It doesn't, yeah, no, it doesn't, right. It doesn't preclude it being assigned to an individual member.
No, it just precludes members who don't want to care with their name.
You know, don't like to sponsor, like, the waste food.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So, that will go to committee, and we'll turn that around hopefully very soon.
I'm trying to think of one that...
Okay. On the resolutions held, the first one by Councilmember Fahy, that's the key of the aggregation one, that's on an agenda for tonight, we don't have time to move it forward or not, but depending on the planning committee action tonight, that's a possibility for Moving down, Item Number 6 is the resolution on the rewards program for the illegal use of ATVs and dirt bikes. That was discussed in the Public Safety Committee last week, came out with a positive recommendation. Ananis, so that will be moved for passage on Thursday.
Yeah, you can...
Next was the resolution by Mr. Igo related to the EIS. I don't know what you want to do, so...
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure how we're moving on this. The planning board did approve 63 last night despite a find that Mr. McCluskey actually had a deed covenant with 15 stipulations in it, okay, that they just ignored and said it wasn't. But it was suggested by Chris Spencer to McCluskey to do this to keep, keep the project going. Now, it meant nothing, so, some people are looking at the legality of it and...
But this doesn't deal with that.
No, but I might just, you know, some people want me to put it up for a vote to say, some don't, and I don't know.
So...
I agree. And, you know, I was at, and Judy was there, and, you know, as a common council member, I really felt this, the way we're treated, that we're just like some kind of milk over there that has no say in anything that's going on with the planning. What they said last night was, we get to appoint them, and then we approve the USDO, and then that's it, sorry. But what I brought up, and I spoke, is that the USDO is a living document. It's already, we're almost two years that we're supposed to have updates, and we haven't. I think we need to send some kind of message that we do count, and that we're elected, and we're responsible to our, the people who voted us in. So, I don't know how to do it, but as a group, you know, from day one, I've always felt I'm part of this group of 15, whether we disagree or we don't have something. But when I see, when I feel somebody's attacking the group, not just, I don't care if they attack me, but when they start attacking the common council, I think that's a problem, that we need to send some kind of message that, you know, we count what we say. All I asked for last night was, we just told off the 38th, so we found out, people wondered what plan passed that came up, and then also about what Joe was saying, the deed, that this covenant's in the deed, and it's, nobody investigated it. It's like, well, we said, you know, Judy brought, handed over things showing exactly what the thing said, and what the council for the planning board said, oh, that has no legal bearing.
I mean, then why did he ask for them, and it was okay for them, they got what they wanted when it was the last, the last development, and now just developed as a last, so they don't mean anything.
I would like to provide...
Well, I think, Derek, go ahead, Susan.
Right, first. Thank you.
I would like to provide just a little bit of context here, clarify the context of this. Back two and a half years ago, a number of us had concerns about this particular property being zoned, these properties being zoned of RM and allowing a four-story development on these properties. But there wasn't any other more appropriate zoning category that this would fit in that would allow some sort of development. So, Chris Spencer specifically recommended we can address those concerns by having the developer file the restrictive covenant, limiting the buildings to three stories. The restrictive covenant was filed almost exactly two weeks before we voted on the USDO, and the residents of West Lawrence and in the neighborhood, and Joe and I dropped our opposition to this being zoned as RM because that restrictive covenant had been filed. That restrictive covenant gave the right to the city to enforce it specifically so that people would be protected.
It said that in it.
In it, yes. And last night, when asked about it, the council, Amy, said essentially that the city's not a party to this restrictive covenant, it's not, you know, a party, and the city has no ability to enforce. I then took the document, underlined that section of it, and passed it down the board. They told me they didn't need to see this, you know, the document being and provide their... But so, I passed that along. When the question was then asked, she said, well, we have no obligation to enforce it. And that's essentially what is happening with the USDO. They also, they also approved, there's a restriction that in the USDO, that you're not supposed to have more than one principal building on a lot, and then that lot needs to comply with the impervious lot coverage requirements. So, they allow two buildings to be combined and not put on one lot, so that the lot will be larger, so that it would then arguably meet these other kind of requirements. And so, they put the two buildings on, and they're saying, essentially, because there's a tunnel between, from the garage under one to this one building, they are one building. So, they've essentially, this, this restriction on one building, one principal structure, applies to R1, R2, RT, and RM, and they essentially did away with that, and, you know, that having any meaning whatsoever, because you can, just some connection between two buildings on a lot makes it enough for it to be considered then one.
But the Capitol and State Office, you know, we have tons of...
Well, right, Capitol and, and the Atlantic Smithville. One, and they labeled each one of these buildings as Buildings B and C on, you know, on their, on their plans. So, that's, and that's just one example of how they have twisted the USDO, so, you know, and so, here we have this agreement, we were snookered when...
Well, I agree. I mean, because it just bothers my...
Anyway, Derek.
So, just back one more from what Tom was saying, and our community is hard to get people to come out, and it's a lot of change that they're, they're trying to implement in our work, and if they're treating homeowners, and they're disrespecting and not listening to homeowners, what chance does, you know, and, and this process is hard to get people to come out, and the first firing that they get that no one's listening to them, and that seems to be resentment from everybody, the common thing, that if you hear council members are getting ignored, the community is getting ignored, and, you know, the process, as I said, you know, last meeting, doesn't seem like it's natural, and that's why it seems like a lot of what they want to do is being met by challenges, so...
If this particular project complied with the USDO...
We wouldn't be...
Actually complied with the USDO and complied with that particular covenant, I wouldn't have any problem with it, I think anybody else would.
So, here's the question.
Well, Jenny, then...
I want, so clearly, there are larger, important unanswered questions here, I mean, there's, there's a lot of larger issues. There's also clearly big process issues. I agree with some of the pieces that Tom was saying, and my big concern is, I find this piece of legislation inherently flawed. I think it sets a bad precedent, and I do not think we should be voting on it, because if we have a precedent where we combine two different pieces of property that are over a mile apart, one of them is already approved, already gone through to combine, I mean, it doesn't make sense, and I think it sets...
Okay, so let me just, wait, can I back up for a second on, as far as the motion to discharge, I want to make clear what the vote is on. So, a motion to discharge is a procedural motion. It is not on the underlying merits of the legislation, so it would be out of order to discuss the legislation.
This, what you're talking about has nothing to do with the...
It's just my request, if it's possible, to maybe unlink these two things so that we can actually talk about the process issues and their concerns with the process separate from this piece of legislation.
Okay, as far as, as far as, as far as the aggregate, okay? The City of Albany requested the Town of Guilherme to do that, and they've also based on the aggregate, okay? They requested that, but pulls us up, we can't do it.
But that situation is a different situation.
We're all different.
I, I just want to point out that, you know, you're all bringing up a lot of different issues here, and I think it's really difficult to have a good conversation without having planning staff here to respond to the issues that are being raised, you know, because I've heard, you know, opposite arguments for some of the things that you're saying, some of the things that Judy's saying. I have, this is first I'm hearing about the covenant, actually, but I, I don't think we can take this much further unless we can have a full discussion with both sides, and you two, Derek, with both sides of the issue presented.
You think they're going to repeal the vote? Probably demolishing it this week for that sake.
Well, I don't, you know, Joe...
Again, my concern, whether this, I didn't care if this got voted down or not, but we asked the planning board to let us make a decision, let the common council vote, and they didn't respect that, and that bothers me, and that should bother every member of the common council, that all we asked for was a 30-day, just so we could vote. I, you know, they got voted down, they got voted down, okay? There was problems, okay, but at least it showed that, you know, we got together, and all we did was ask, can you just hold off on this decision for 30 days? And that's my beef, and I don't care about...
Okay, so let me just wrap some stuff up here. The, if you want to do the motion to discharge, I think to some extent it might be moved because of the action taken, but...
Yeah, I agree, some people want to...
But if you want to do the motion to discharge, I just want to remind people that the vote on a motion and the discussion on the motion is on the procedural aspect, it's not on the merits of the resolution itself, all right? If the motion to discharge is successful, then the resolution is before the council, and then you can discuss the merits of the legislation.
Can we modify it then, in that way?
If you wanted to offer an amendment on it, that's, but it has to be discharged.
There are some people that just changed their minds completely for certain reasons on this, okay? And I'm just sure they'd like to work with the administration in future, they don't want to jeopardize that, okay? And they don't want to put other people on the spot, so that's going on way more...
All right, and the other part...
But the other thing is, they, they also made a negative declaration last night on this project, so it's kind of moot.
So, I assume there are going to be other challenges on their decision based on the administrative part of September 8th, okay? Okay, so that aside, the other part, the amendments to the USDO, which I believe were also approved last night, the, these big, you know, six-month amendments that were due two and a half years ago, they will be coming to us at some point. And seriously, I think it's important that the council be very methodical in terms of its review of those amendments as we move forward, because there are a lot of issues in there that touch on a lot of different things, and we need to make sure we go through them carefully and not feel pressured to rush things through. So, that's also important when that happens. I don't know what their timetable is in terms of getting something to us, and I've also indicated, I had a very previous conversation a while back with Brad, in terms of the need that we have printed copies of those amendments when, whenever they're done, so that we all have that document. And I don't know what, there is something on the, on the planning department website, I don't know if that is, represents what the planning board did last night or not, but it's been going through and through, et cetera. Personally, I didn't do a lot of comments on those or go to the public hearing on the planning board, because I don't find those public hearings useful, and so, you know, we're going to have to really have our discussion, and I anticipate we'll get a lot of more public discussion here than we, than the planning board may have gotten, but that's...
There was no presentation at the public hearing on the contents of what was being proposed.
So, I do want to move on some other things, but Tom, if you have something quick to grab.
Because you're in the leadership, what I'd like to see with those changes is, you know, a printed copy is good and things like that, but I also want to be able to see, you know, the word documents you have, when things were edited, what exactly they're changing that, from what I've looked at and what I've heard, is that you can't follow all the changes that they've done, and I want to be able to understand...
What I anticipate they would do, because we did get something back in 2017, which we questioned, we never acted on that one, on the old council, was a document with track changes, which in effect showed the additions and deletions. So, that's, but I want, I think members should have a printed copy and not depend on a 300-page electronic copy. But they, that hasn't come up in leadership meetings in terms of any timetable on this, so I don't know what they're, even though it is a significant issue.
You should...
All right, so, we'll, you know, there might be a motion to discharge or not. Okay. On, again, it's a procedural question, not on the merits of the resolution. Item 8 by Mr. Flynn at all is the Empire Football Team Resolution, which will be a pass. I think we're holding it because we're going to do a presentation. All right, so there might be a presentation on that, and if they are here to do a presentation, we'll move it up front. And I assume, I think everybody's a sponsor on that. That is all that I had on the agenda. Were there any other agenda items or other issues before I turn it over?
Yeah, why don't we stay with this research council?
Okay, I think we got, what, one?
I have heard, candidate submitted their resume to cover that, so now we have two candidates, and someone that's, they're interested, so they had to field a contact with City Court's office to find out information.
Okay.
So, we're going to two candidates?
Yeah, so I haven't, so we'll look, and I'm going to need to put together a, an interview committee similar to what we've had in the past. It's not going to be an easy one to fill, because it's not an easy position to fill, and we kind of lucked in with Jared, actually, frankly.
That was a good pick.
Yeah. So, let me, I'll check to see that. Also, we have...
PEG access.
PEG access, do we have? We still have more on that, right?
We only have one person, and the person previously applied, so...
Oh, is that the person, is that, is that? Yeah, okay. So, we do need to beat the bushes for applicants for the PEG access committee, and also, you know, in terms of the job description for the research council, you know...
Please share.
Please share and try to get that out.
I just got a text sent to me, and they said something about the DGS commissioner eliminating the nature...
I don't know anything about that, I haven't heard.
We can ask.
We can follow up on it. You know, I don't know if that's because, obviously, departments are, and budget for 2020 is being finalized, and that's actually due to us by October 1st, so I don't know if that's something that they're planning or what. I don't know. But that's, first I heard.
Yeah, we're looking at September 9th.
That's a one-shot.
The last thing we saw, DGS was down 40, but almost, and the police department, so maybe, maybe it's tough.
I haven't heard it.
All right, I need to...
Is it possible, I think Joe brought up a good point, with that, DGS is down, Police Department is down, what the economy would be down a bit, but DGS, if you want, would be hacked out, you know, we're, I mean, you know, we may be down, how do you, five hours? So, is something we can do to have a discussion about, a lot of, so many of major departments down, you know? Those two probably...
Some of it, the residency, which hurts a lot, you know, so...
I don't, I get that.
I don't know if the residency is as big an issue on the DGS as it might be on some of the other...
I think what I think I was told...
Quite as that's an issue, we need to have a discussion about it, if it goes down 40...
Right, yeah.
They removed the, for the police application, they removed the residency.
Well, we got this presentation.
You know, we're talking about being down, and, you know, who's, who's got the million dollars, success, where's that going to go? Is that...
Oh, that's for him to decide, I guess.
So, what are you going to do?
I don't know if that's the case.
I see now, the position in Police Department and DGS, it's public, we still have funded positions.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with funding, that's right. Money isn't a budget.
Someone who's been saying for five years that this administration has been cutting positions and just not filling, and, and not even addressing the work that is connected to it, that's fallen on people who work in the city. People, you know, the same way, you just made a point about not wanting to jeopardize other council people, well, that's how people feel about their job. That's why when I said, when I said that council, I've been getting so many, people have been reaching out to me, sharing how they feel about it, and so, it's just, when I, when I call DGS, the first thing they do is they say, hello, DGS, please hold, and you can be on hold as long as five minutes. When I'm walking, when I'm walking in, um, DGS, I axillate, do you want any help down there? And it was like they were scared to say yes, and, you know, that's the workforce that we are leaning on right now, is real thin.
We're going to have a committee meeting about...
We have a committee meeting about what can we do, and it's like Joe said, but Joe, that's on us too. I mean, I know it's not so favorable to touch that.
Touch what? I didn't hear.
Presidency retirement.
With the police decision, is not the issue, that's not the issue.
I think it may come, the winters, it's, it's going to be more of a long business, a loose title.
Well, I hope you feel some of the...
Who committed with that people?
Well, we might look at a human resource.
Because I can't even get two potholes filled. I guess I'm on the outlist.
Sergio here to explain some of that.
We can do that, or else, so who's the...
Well, Michael Bryan, our chair requested him to come before the, before the committee again, before budget. He did.
We'll, we'll follow up on that, so. Are there any other issues?
He did.
So, can I just, I just want to highlight this.
I can't even get two potholes filled.
We're to agree to have a finance committee meeting for council members to provide some input into, you know, the budget as it's being developed, because Corey had said something at the last council meeting about how, or what's it, one before, that how now it's kind of the budget's being developed, and, you know, incorporate the, the input into it, and I think it's appropriate to be collectively opposed to piecemeal.
I agree.
And I highlighted some of the things that we brought up in the, in the budget intent now, that we're going to senior services, and we might be able to, you know, be...
Let me think about that.
However, some of what we're talking about, we can potentially ask for additional funding, but then come down to having commissioners come in, you know, in the individual...
If he intends to be discussing.
Other committees, you know, talk about how, you know, providing that level of oversight, for example, parks and that. You know, I think that there needs to be more oversight with regard to the DGS, and having a conversation about where's the step, and maybe bring the police chief in also about what can be done, what should be done.
We have a summary sheet, I think.
So, it might come, but there's only so much that I think that the council is going to be able to do in the budget.
And also, remember, with the...
Nine.
Okay. So they're, they're well into finalizing a budget, just remember that, so it's, you know, almost, if you press it up, it gets a deadline there. I'm going to turn it over to our presentation. This is on the Justice Assistance Grant that we get every year, usually, Sergeant, please.
Sergeant.
Usually Sergeant Reagan is here to do a presentation on this. This year, we have Lieutenant Jones. So this was...
Kind of retired.
This was emailed out earlier. It's kind of like the same application, and it, there's this requirement that it has to be presented to the council and available for public comment before it's finalized. So I'm going to turn that over, and that's, once that presentation is over, we'll adjourn caucus and go into the planning committee meeting.
So this is, as Councilmember Conti said, this is a grant that the city applies for and receives every year. It's a non-competitive grant. It's a formula, a formula, the amount of money that we get based on crime data and population. And it is essentially, it's used mostly for overtime. The past several years, it's only been used for overtime. So it's an opportunity to use non-local funds for overtime in the police department. That's, you know, kind of the way that I would look at it. It's the exact same use, the exact same funding request as in the past several years, except there is one addition this year at the request of the police chief for ballistic shield, which Lieutenant Jones knows a lot. So if you have any questions about the ballistic shields portion, or even the regular use of the grant, which is very broad, I mean, we go into some of the key programs in, in the proposal, but it can be used for a broad range of overtime. Any questions?
For the truancy abatement, who is working at the research right now?
Katie Clark oversees it, but the SRO, particularly officers that go to the school system, if you will, to work.
Guess, I'm wondering.
This is a resource.
So, the school resource officer, are they doing truancy abatement, or is that just the title we gave them? Are they doing that following up? What is their job? Are they actively, when they know a kid's not in school, or they see kids walking, or what are they doing? Since they say truancy abatement.
There is a narrative in there, but I can't speak to the operational justice.
Okay.
I mean, there used to be, there used to be a program that was, and when I was there, it was, yeah, that same program. That program stopped, so that, it looks like it's that same program that they're, you know, like the Cooperation Teams with the Security Department, the DA's office, and, federal, I think it's federal. So it looks like it was the same program where they did go to people's houses, so, I mean, maybe they...
That program hasn't been operational for...
They had funding for it, so it wasn't...
So, you know, when I see truancy, because that's a thing that, that we're tackling with the school industry, you know, and that's the reason why I want to know who that person is, so, because part of my responsibility is going to be absenteeism, and I want to be able to know who the person is, so I...
Yeah, basically with their job description.
To use that as a traditional piece of, but when you say Willie, when I call Willie, we can't ever get Willie, get officers Willie, do we?
Oh, you're...
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, the last four or five years, whenever you call a SRO, they're never available. And, you know, they're, they're saying that they have things, you know, the, the message is mixed, depending on, depending on who you talk to. But, you know, this is clear, it says truancy, and I just want to make sure.
I mean, I can't speak to the operational justice of that, or how they, I mean, the larger part of this is suppressed by crime, but truancy abatement is included within it. It's only a small portion of funding, but if you need more detail on how they're conducting truancy abatement, I'm happy, but you're in contact with the right person.
Any other questions?
You can't turn it down.
How much of the ballistic shields? So the ballistic shields, I only printed out one, if I'm correct, but, uh...
It is in the budget, which is worth, which is, which is for the grant's announcement, so I think that's...
So they're thinking about, like, here, public safety, or some...
It's just a presentation. It's just a vote. It's just a vote. You can't turn down money, so. But that's a good question. Don't put in a budget truancy base, truancy abatement, and they're not doing it.
We have Campbell County before we had SUV, so they're basically to prepare officers to respond to actuarial incidents.
Will you play the committee?
No, they don't have a timeline like the rest.
Community aggregation, community choice, anything? Um, okay.
Okay, so this is presented, required to be presented to the council, and it's also available for public comment. It doesn't come to the council for a vote. If you have comments on it, though, you should get them to Leah. Any comments or additional questions? Do you have a question? Oh, okay, all right.
Before we start the planning committee meeting, I just want to encourage everyone to please consider staying for this presentation. We would really like to get the word out about this community, community choice aggregation program. It's something that I feel really strongly about, and a lot of our, a lot of city residents do, in terms of us going towards more renewable energy here in the city, and also saving money for city residents. So if you can stay, we would love them to have you stay, have an opportunity to ask questions.
I gotta go to DGA, try to appeal for...
Okay, it's just no further business. Caucus is adjourned, and we'll go to the planning board meeting, planning committee meeting.